Ron. How are you?
Good.
Get yourself set up, get your pen out and take out your flask, whatever you're doing. It'll work. Here's Doug.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman, whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Bye.
Doug, come on up.
Okay.
Pull up a chair. Put your stuff down and then we'll get started, all right? Okay? All right, let's get started, Sledge of Allegiance.
This is the flag, United States of America and here's the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, have a seat here. All right, good evening, everybody. This, uh, this is our regular meeting here for February two thousand twenty-two, the Smithfield Township Planning Commission, February tenth. And, uh, calling the meeting to order, so we have everybody present except Michael Albert, and I'd also welcome our newest member, Chris Bowers. Joining us, this is his first meeting, so, uh, welcome, and, uh, you'll, you'll catch on here as we go, as we go along here, and you'll, you'll be fine. First order of business this evening, uh, minutes for review, I'm taking a look at the minutes. There are two versions, Jake was kind enough to, uh, do the minutes when we had our January meeting, did it with two different versions. Uh, version number two is the one where he, uh, highlighted, uh, requests and recommendations here that we've been talking about. Um, doing is we sort of alter our, uh, slightly alter our meeting, um, protocol, you know, and then, and then the one that's marked number one does not have those items, uh, in it. I personally like version number two, because I think it's in keeping with the things that we, uh, the direction that we've, we've sort of been wanting to go here. And as such, I would make a motion that we accept and approve the minutes from January thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, the one with the number two in the corner, the version with request. That's my motion. Any seconds?
I'll second that.
Discussion, go ahead.
Uh, I also like the, the new format, I think that's great. Uh, two points, I think that the third paragraph on the second page should have items bolded on it, because that's a very important, um, topic of action.
Sorry, which page, in third page?
Secondly, second page, second page, third paragraph.
Oh, okay.
That, just the whole concept of action there to improve communications with the supervisors. So I think there's parts of that that should be bolded to point that out. Uh, the other things that I would note is that I think it's really important as we move through these meetings to specify when we, uh, make a motion or create some kind of action to cover who, what, when, who's going to do what, by when. And it's really simple, and it will help us keep track of the items that are done and aren't done.
Okay. As you saw in the, in the, uh, the revised version of the agenda there that I sent around, I kind of incorporated all the stuff we've kicked around, really since late last fall and, and into it, I'm gonna keep that up. Um, I happened to bring my folder for January as well today, just to make sure if there were things to, to go back on, but I am gonna keep, uh, Mitch, I am gonna keep them, uh, moving along here, the, the various reviews and so forth, so that we keep track of them for ourselves, I'll, I'll be keeping track of those as well. All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
No.
All right, all right, so version number two is the one that is adopted, Ron.
Nice job, Jacob.
Thank you, yeah, yeah.
You know what happens when you do a good job, don't you?
Yeah, you're right, you get to keep it, right, forever, right, yeah, exactly. All right, so this was approved. All right, next. Uh, any comments on the agenda from the public? Or we're not? Number six, new plans to act upon, I'll start with six A, Eagle Valley Self-Storage. I saw that it's gone around, there was a request that this be tabled, uh, from tonight's, from tonight's meeting.
Yeah, and I also saw the applicant this morning on a different project, and he said they, he confirmed he wanted.
Yeah, they want to ta, they want to table it, so we'll, so we'll.
Do we have anything officially in writing, or is it?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, what do we have to do here, Ron, do we get anything from them?
Well, in, in looking at the file, uh, the time to act doesn't expire until April seventh, so I'm not sure if you want to get anything at this point. I mean, you'll meet again on March tenth.
Yeah, we meet again in, yeah, though, is that what it is, is it March tenth?
Assuming there's, assuming there's something on, on which this would be on.
Well, I would imagine.
So you're gonna be able to vote on it, assuming it's, it's okay, and then get it before the supervisors prior to April seventh. Now, if it's still not ready by.
Well, if it's not ready, then it's up to them, they'll ask you to request.
Well, we have nothing to review anyway.
I, and I think what you're gonna see is, you're gonna see a revised plan, which will restart the clock.
Which will restart the clock.
Make a motion, we table this.
Okay.
Till they resubmit.
Second. All right, Dave, number one, any other discussion?
The second on that.
Bob Moses. Any, any discussion about tabling the six A here, Eagle Valley Self-Storage to our March normal meeting, regular meeting, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next, six B, major subdivision plan, lands of Franklin Hill Manor.
Everybody doing?
Okay.
Hi, Matt, I guess I was here in December, I believe, we got acceptance to have township here with me. Uh, we got a review and, and went through the comments, a lot of it's pretty straightforward here. Uh, there's a couple items related to the roadway, I know Melissa Firdar also emailed saying she'd like to take this stuff, I'm questioning her concerns on that and things.
All right. Do we have any kind of an additional, is there some other review letter, something, John?
No, the only review letter we have is January thirteenth.
Okay.
I think the comment, the one comment that needs to be addressed regarding the road, if I recall, is thirty-two.
Well, I don't have it, wait, do we have one in there? Okay. Well, we'll, we'll get you.
This is, uh, this is self-storage, that is a self-storage, generally that one.
You guys, you guys have the plans for it? You guys have plans for it, too, for it?
We did, I don't see them.
We did, the number put out. I have a set if anyone wants to look at it.
And I have a set I can share.
Is there?
The pile is self-stored, so.
This is all self-storage, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Table.
I have a set here.
Okay, all right, thirty-two, though, let's, let's talk about it, 'cause that's the one.
Yeah.
Dealing, dealing with the streets, 'cause I know I, for one, have a major problem with that, to say it right up to it. No, in general.
We have people on Zoom, I don't wanna. Uh, I don't have anything to hold, but the question, the question is, the question that we raised.
Yes.
And I think Scott may have some of his own questions, but the question that we raised is, will we be to hold up one end so everybody can see it?
Ah, yeah, take this.
Albert Road.
I had my old one here, I got one here.
Yeah, I have two, I have one for this one.
Yeah.
Comes in through here, and then.
It just sort of stops.
Well, it doesn't stop, though. But, yeah, there's another driveway or something.
It goes back to several houses.
Yeah.
I used to cut their lawns when I was in T D, so, yeah, I know that one, yeah.
So, so do we want, do we want a cul-de-sac here, uh, and then this goes back, I mean, we gotta decide what the disposition of this road is going to be.
Does the road actually continue back or just the right of way?
Oh, yeah.
No, of course, it's the right of way.
Do you know, John, whether it's a dedicated right-of-way or is it a plowed it right-of-way? It's a plowed it right-of-way, it's not, uh, I don't believe there's anything about maintenance, right, like a lot of private roads from a long time ago, I don't think there's anything for the whole road for maintenance, who's in charge of maintenance, lots like that. Um, that's what we, we, we would be broken for this section of it. Now, the thirty-two is about the cul-de-sac, um, yeah, so, our proposal, we talked about is, and, you know, discussion, that's why we're here, to discuss this, is taking a portion out of that lot, the last lot, and putting a turnaround area in it, so an emergency vehicle could use that area to turn in, back up, e- even not emergency, oil truck, mail, or whatever it is, and try to put in a cul-de-sac at the end of the road, that's not the end of the road.
Is this gonna become a township road? That's one of the other points that we want to discuss.
If it is, you definitely need a place for snowplows to turn around.
If it is, I don't see why you're stopping there. You've got a right-of-way that goes all the way back, and I don't really care what it says, because I live on one, too, I'm on Boyer Lane at the bottom of the hill. And I'm the last guy in, and I'm the benevolent dictator, and I, just because I've lived there and I make sure I maintain, and I, and my neighbors give me a couple bucks so that I can, you know, hire the snow plowing and all, and all the rest of it, just because it doesn't have a maintenance agreement, doesn't mean there isn't, it easement, there isn't rights, you can get easements any number of ways. But, but that, but my road terminates, where the road terminates, which is my garage, okay, Boyer Lane goes all the way to my house. What you're saying is you want to cut it into here, so you want to improve to there, but that's not the end of Albert Lane. I have no idea why we would approve something that only does four lots in, and you still leave the lane that's still called Albert Lane behind it, that makes literally no sense.
Well, we're, we're meeting, we're meeting the organs, for the subdivision, we have to improve what's in front of the subdivision. And we're not stopping the road, it'll, it'll be, it'll be a dirt gravel road.
Is this a, is this on private property?
Yeah, all the way back.
Yeah, so it would go from a, a.
Cassell used to own that, Aaron's used to own that.
It would be like, as right now you turn off of, uh, Franklin, I believe, is out, you turn on to a dirt road that is Albert Lane. It would be paved and a, a real road all the way back to where the subdivision ends, and it would turn into a dirt road, and as for the, we were talking about the cul-de-sac to start, you know, instead of a cul-de-sac, you know, we were thinking of having an area for snowplows and all that stuff, on that la, last lot dedicated to that, which would be paved, too. Uh, you know, we would have to show that truck, fire truck, or whatever could be able to turn around there. Right now, if you turn in Albert Lane and go all the way back, you're not turning around.
How does Albert Lane get plowed all the way back?
I don't have an answer for that, I'm sure it's the property owners, like, like you talk about, like, we're.
Right.
So we're widening this to a local road standard, because with these new lots.
Right, we understand that.
Right, so we would, so, we would definitely want to set up maintenance for this section of it because of the subdivision, but we, we won't be able to act or talk for the rest of Albert Lane.
This is turned over to the township, then?
But then I turn it over to the township.
Yeah, that's another discussion, if, if, if that would be an option of township, that, that, that can be discussed.
Do I want to turn it over to township? I wouldn't suggest turning it over to township, if you're gonna run it all the way back, 'cause it's Albert Lane and goes all the way back. This is nothing that our organs would have ever contemplated, because they were, oh, because they were parcels and such, they thought, what they didn't want to have is multiple, how, multiple new houses on something that did not otherwise have public access. So you're doing it for this part to, whatever, the, the, to, to throw four more, to throw these on there and have a maintenance agreement, and even have a maintenance agreement, and you still have the people behind who, uh, who are part of what you want to call your maintenance agreement. And not even improve the road beyond that, I, it is nonsensical to me, utterly nonsensical.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking they'll be happy to have a place they can pass each other, and, and up in a place.
Don't be so sure.
Scott, I don't know that I agree with you, because, um, if this remains private.
Yeah.
And they, we could say you should have some kind of homeowner's agreement.
No, we can't say that, 'cause they don't, you only need that for, there's more than twelve.
More than twelve? All right, so they don't.
There has to be some type of maintenance, or even for those four lots for that section of road.
So let's just say that there was one house back here, not multiple.
Right.
And that was pri, a private driveway, we would not require them to do all of that back to that single house. So at what point do we require them to do the driveway all the way, or the road all the way back?
What I'm saying is, I wouldn't allow this at all, when you're talking about something that has other parcels behind it, that would, I still, I couldn't think of another example of this.
No, I can't either.
It's improving it for them, though, at least that's.
I mean, they're getting improvement.
I mean, I guess, I'm, I'm looking at it backwards from how you are, in my mind, it, it's a one-lane, you can barely get a vehicle down that road right now, which I'm sure it's like every other private road in development that are in all the townships, that everyone doesn't get along, you know, and, and someone is doing more than they should or whatever, we're talking about taking, now I don't have a figure of how long Albert Lane is, but we're taking a large portion of it and turn it into a real road that will be maintained, and there'll actually be something in writing saying who's responsible for maintaining it, which is the problem with all that.
But that would just be for the four houses you're doing.
Correct. I mean, we could, we could have a discussion with the other lots, but, you know.
Well, how long do you think it would be before these four people get, get annoyed with plowing this much, and the other people, you're now saying don't have to pay them, with the maintenance on it, whoops.
I would be forward to buying those four lots, that's, it's like any development, you go into the township, they'll know the road, and you have to pay to, you know, pay to have done or whatever.
They have the potholes.
Right, the ones that don't pay or dirt and have potholes, these would be paved and it would be.
But in twenty years, if it needs to be repaved, these four are paying it.
Correct, as far as being, any development association, but, but it's in writing, right now, Albert Lane, there's nothing about maintenance or anything, so, you know, it depends who buys what, if they're gonna fill the pothole and or cut the brush back or.
Well, not really, actually, I thought how easement law works, okay.
So, do you live on Albert Lane?
I do.
Would you like to say so?
I see a lot of issues with.
Well, why don't you stand up, let's, let's, and who are you, sir?
I'm Steve Hettle, I've lived on Albert Lane for twenty, like, four years now.
Okay.
Uh, we do have a.
Which one is yours, which house?
On the first house on the right.
Okay.
Would be on the backside of the proposed, uh, subdivision. A lot of property back behind the end of where, where you're saying you're gonna stop. Um, of this, if you don't build a road that is unable to accept the township, plows, fire trucks, that is going to be developed at some point, I'm sure. So, so who's gonna be responsible to rebuild that road? It's our only access to our homes, I don't know how you're gonna put a road in while we still have to, you know, get back and forth every day. Um, I do believe that there's a right-of-way on the other side of property that is owned by somebody else who comes down the other side, that's actually there.
This would, so this would make this section of road, the real road that drops and fires, like, we won't be able to do this or propose this without the fire truck, you know, get into at least this far and get turned around and do what it needs to do, it would be, I mean, yeah.
Oh, I understand, but that's, if that's, if it's still.
It sounds like his concern is to people that live there while you're making this new road.
Well, the construction, the construction won't shut down the road, they, they won't go to poke down the road, and, and it would be like any construction on any road, it would be in, in phases and lanes and, you know.
But if it's built to field township specifications like Franklin Hill Road, that's a different story. Um, I just don't know how that's gonna be feasible with the wetlands and the back end of that, um, but that's not my... The water problem we have is, I'm sorry, the water problem we have is exponential compared to what it was. Maybe we've never had problems up until maybe two years ago with water.
So, when you guys do four maintenance, is that able?
Uh, we have agreement between the four houses, I plowed the lane, uh, gave it the end, it's good. He has a tractor, he builds the potholes. It's just, uh, you know, we're neighbors.
So, you guys do all the ground with the developer and to talk about stuff to get, like, an opinion, I think?
That's a David Switz. He's, he's the last one?
Almost.
Almost.
Um, and your sister owned the last two, the Albert.
Those are the Alberts, and before that it was the Aaron's. Yeah, that's the one I used to cut. You can see that through the wood, I'm at Aaron's back there.
So, you control it, so it's affordable.
Yeah, you go through my parents' house, hey, you can walk straight through the woods, just go back to...
Uh, no, I did not, um...
Well, actually, Steve, I'm losing, but this, you're right, it was a lot, but, yeah.
My biggest concern is water. Biggest concern is water.
Well, it wouldn't be, because of how the regs are, so you can't dump a, a little bit of extra water in when you do something like that.
And that's the other way.
We, we'd be glad to sit and talk with you guys and, and show you where everyone, uh, that would, you know, help us and everybody. Uh, can you remind us?
Oh, okay, yeah. You, you first, yeah, then, you'll go Robert first, then you both? What?
Yeah.
I was just asking if John could remind us with his, uh, comments we're, we've got relating to this.
I don't have a plan to provide any numbers, but, um, I'm wondering if it's a, probably had a late apology, Mr. Sessler, there's a note for well, which is part of a road to pay to get to the township, obviously not, and ones that were not are kind of left in little because, um, at this point, he didn't, uh, nobody wants to pay events, uh, too expensive to pay that part that wasn't saved. And if the residents really wanted to get together, township, there's probably a reason to say that the township, uh, which is Paul's Court, doing part in another and then leaving these people for limbo. So, uh, and, yeah, I don't have a plan to provide, but, John, Ron, uh, you know what I'm talking about, and is this something that could be a similar problem?
I don't think so, and I, I guess I disagree with Scott as well, and the reason I say that is...
Bob, you're right, Robert, by the way. It's just like the plow, just on a smaller scale. Go ahead.
Uh, any project that comes into the township that fronts on a street, uh, is required to improve that street for their frontage. Most projects that come in don't have streets that are in this, I don't have a better word, poor shape. I mean, there's no paving here, it's just really a dirt lane. So, they're coming in and they are going to improve their frontage to township standard. Uh, and where that happens in other areas of the township, that's what other developers do, but they're not required to improve the continuing street. Uh, I think you can even go as far as say, you know, gateway. They came in, they're putting in millions of dollars of improvements in their frontage on the roads. I guess is two oh nine should be improved even farther up the street, but it's not.
We're not even talking apples and oranges here.
I think we are, unless I'm misunderstanding your point.
No, this is, this is, those, that's gonna be two, two public roads, whichever one just has to be controlled by the state. This is a private road and, and, and a township road here. I don't see, here's, here's a good question for you guys. Wanna use this road here probably because it's easier for you. Why don't you just turn your development around? You can put it out here, and you can poke, and you can poke a road out to Franklin Hill Road, then you don't have to touch that road. Why don't we do that?
Or more 'cause of the topography. I have one more point on, uh, today's standards, like I said.
I don't really care about today's standards. What I care about is ultimately this spot is gonna have neighbors here and neighbors back there that are not gonna like this.
Can I just finish my thing, though?
Oh, you can finish, whatever you'd like, but I'm just saying where, this is, the, this, this spot here is what lands on my desk.
Yeah. When the, when the subdivision was approved, the township didn't require an PDS permit. We're out to get into details of, but now, the offer to, uh, improve that road is responsible for crawling runoff and treating it from the road that was built when there was no standard. So, for water concerns, all that, we are gonna improve the situation. It'll be paid for by this guy. I, I guess I'm not, yeah, I'm not understanding there, I understand what you're saying about the people back there, but it's just more about that there's gonna be more houses there. The road's gonna be better, everything else about the situation.
A part of the road's gonna be better.
But, I don't understand what you're saying, Scott. Why do you think the people beyond won't like this? What, what is the issue?
Essentially, you're gonna have to repay this. They didn't do it, and, and, and they're gonna say, why should I have to pay to repave this? I didn't want some of the first...
I don't, I think, they're not gonna have to.
Four lots are responsible for that, will be...
He said, he said, when I asked that question, he said there will be a, an HOA for this section of road to main- to, to plow it and maintain. I said in twenty years, when it needs repaving, who does it? These four houses have to maintain it.
If it remains a private road.
Right.
Yeah, sorry, that will be clear.
Yeah, that's true, still need that. Now, go ahead, wait, that one's too bad.
Yeah.
I don't like it.
I think the importance for that is for us.
I would be much happier if Smithfield Township took that road over and they're responsible for plowing.
I think your residents would be happy with that, too.
And that, that's another discussion point that we won't talk about. Every township with a dedicated road, you said some don't even wanna talk about it and some, some do, so...
You have no idea who's gonna buy it.
Yeah.
You know, and to begin, they're all nice, they look great, there's flowers, but...
Well, if someone, if one person built one lot, it'd be the same size.
But they have to...
I think they treat it as a minor.
Yeah.
So, Scott, if I'm hearing you correctly, I wanna understand what you're saying. You think that this road from Franklin Hill all the way back to the driveway of the last house should be repaid or should be brought up to township standards?
They wanna do it this way, yes, or they can make something, uh, topography, not topography, that's not, that's not my problem, they're the ones that bought it. Or you make your own that comes out here in a Franklin Hill Road, so...
Well, okay, that's option number two.
Yeah.
So, my question is, is this driveway that goes back, who owns the land?
Well, the individual landowners own the land, and there's an easement over it.
They would have to easement over that.
There is an easement over it. There's an easement already as part of, as part of the change of title, it is.
There is, okay, so there's, and the township could take that over as an, as an easement?
If they wanted to.
It would have to be upgraded to the standard of...
If they wanted to, they would probably have to be, it's probably something that says it's like twenty feet wide, or, you know, a right-of-way over the, you know...
Well, the road would have to be upgraded to the standard.
And how far is it from this end of the paving to the furthest?
I believe it's about a quarter of a mile.
Yeah.
So, twelve hundred feet, give or take, an inch.
Longer than you think, driving back in there.
Yeah. So, option one is pave it all the way in, option two is put a new road in, option three is put a cul-de-sac there, and it's a private road, and option four is put a cul-de-sac here and it turn it over to the township as if, and then, as if, and just keep this as private. The way I see it. Any other options for this?
Not that I see.
Outside of the cul-de-sac, just having a, making the turnaround on, on our, our property, you know? 'Cause I don't, I don't think the road, the right-of-way's wide enough to throw a cul-de-sac in, or we would have to do something on our lot somewhere. But, yeah, you are, I think you're correct, and, and the options are tough.
Is there any, any of them that are not allowed by the township? Any of those options?
You can't put more than four, you can't put more than four houses that access a private lane as part of our ordinance.
That's the reason we are...
Say that again, you can't...
Because I know we had that discussion.
We had a discussion, it's the same, it's the same thing here, yeah.
So, say that again, you can't have more than...
You can't have more, you can't do, you, you can't cut in, uh, the subdivision there with more than four houses that...
On a private road.
On a private road.
So, then that means it has to be a township road.
No, no, without upgrading it to a township road.
Which contemplated it going, whether it says it or not, obviously what was contemplated was it was gonna be one, one whole tract developed that was gonna then be upgraded to, not cut off halfway down. That's where I, that's where I have a problem.
It, it's not one developer that's doing this, it's multiple people.
Yeah.
And you really can't force these people to do anything.
That's right. Or they make their own road.
But if this was built to township standards, then it's no longer meeting that, it's no longer the criteria, criteria you just said where it's more than four on a private road. This is now a public.
Oh, it's now, well, no, it will be. The private road goes all the way back.
Yeah, but that's existing, that's, that's before. It's already that situation.
Right.
So, we're actually improving it, this part, this still remains the same.
One man's improvement, another man's spot to be...
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Asking a question, really. It seems to me that in days of yore, and by that I mean thirty years ago, twenty-five years ago, you guys would know better than I, uh, there were instances when the build-out of residential housing, uh, force required roads to stop and for a cul-de-sac to be put in, even though a future road was going ahead down, down the way.
There's a lot of paper roads out there in development.
Right, so, so there's, so that's, that's in a sense what you're suggesting with a cul-de-sac, is that...
Correct.
Is that there'd be a cul-de-sac, but still people would be able to drive through the cul-de-sac and on down their gravel road to their house.
And I don't know if, um, have, what the land tracts are, like, behind this, but if anyone will buy something or want to, or divide more, they'd, they'd have to continue with the road.
They can't, 'cause then they're gonna have more than four houses that access the property.
But then, but if it's a township road, then that's...
It's not a township road.
Why can't they turn it over to the township?
That they could do.
That's what I'm saying, if they would turn it over to the township.
But that's not what's in front of us.
Well, that's what we're discussing. We're discussing options.
I believe it could be private road, but it had to be upgraded to a local road standard, accommodate more than four houses.
Yeah, I don't think it's called, uh, John, do you know?
I think that statements pertaining to whether it is, uh, a minor or a major subdivision. The way I read it is that if you have a private road for four lots, you're gonna have just four, or four plus him and the other people. That being said, part of the road has to be approved to meet township construction standards and also have a safe and convenient access for emergency vehicles.
Right, but that doesn't cut it off at four lots. Well, I think he's saying that you, they can't, you can't do more than four lots, is that correct, or you can do more than four lots and you have to bring it up to the standards of the ordinance?
Right, that's what he said.
Correct, yeah.
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
So, you can bring it up to township standards, but it doesn't say that it has to be turned over to the township.
It does not say it has to be dedicated, that's correct.
So, they could make this private, put a turnaround area here.
It has to be dedicatable.
Right, it could be standard.
It could be.
Well, that's what's proposed. What is proposed is to township standards. If we said we want a dedicated, the township said yes, we'd take it, the first thing they're gonna do is go to John and say this, this, you know, built correctly for the maintenance.
Well, I'm about one vote here. Anybody else have, I'm sorry, I've kind of monopolized this little hot button.
So, I just wanna make sure, is that you think that they should develop this road all the way back to the last house and pay for the whole thing?
I think that's really what's contemplated in the statutes themselves. That's what I actually think it was, it was meaning to be.
Right, if it was a brand-new subdivision type of a thing.
That's really what it was for.
Yeah, but if this, if this didn't exist and this was the last house, this would not have to be brought up to township's standards.
Uh, then it would be three.
Okay, three, it was three, okay. So, whatever we're doing here is better for the people at the end in terms of driving on it, and if you're gonna make these four an HOA that is responsible for that road...
I, it hasn't happened. Why would you guys not?
Well, that would be required of course, somebody would have to.
If those people are in that, with that, with that maintenance agreement, fast forward us all. We're all a lot grayer, older, fatter, and balder. These people don't wanna do it anymore. Or they don't, or they don't get along, and screw you and the rest of it.
Because now, what do you do about the guy behind you?
Which is right now?
No, it is.
What teeth are, I'm sorry, what teeth are there to make sure that they apply by?
These guys can't enforce their, these guys can't enforce their, their home or...
Yeah, but he can go back to plowing the whole thing like he is now.
Right, right.
He's already plowing the whole distance.
But they're supposed to.
I'm assuming. There's nothing in writing or whatever. You guys have a good relationship or whatever. So, if someone move, if one person moves in that doesn't wanna do it, what you're asking is, there is no teeth right now for these four houses.
No, no, there's teeth.
Yeah, yeah, there, there will be, it won't be to township without there being teeth legally, and the deeds on the plan or whatever, and if someone's not getting along, they can call an attorney and say, they're supposed to be putting in this much money a year.
I guess what he's saying is, what if they all became, um, snowbirds, and all four of them are in Florida, and they don't plow it? They say, well, we don't need to plow 'cause we're not here. So, then what happens?
I think the maintenance responsibilities and stuff, and, 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 you could probably, the maintenance responsibilities are gonna be that they're responsible for it no matter what, it doesn't matter where they live, if they have to pay somebody to do it.
What's the repercussion?
Well, you can't, you can't bind their lots with your front stuff.
Um, we're talking about the four lots and what they have to maintain in front of their lots.
And if they don't, what does he have to do? Bring suit against these four, 'cause he can't enforce using your lot, 'cause he's not part of your agreement. That's the, that's part of the problem.
Ah, now I get it.
He's not, their lots are not subject to your grand plan.
And that's, but right now, there's nothing.
There...
He just admitted to it, right now, there's nothing, but you can have some issue.
No, 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 there is, there is. There's easement law, please, don't. There is. How it works, there's, everybody that has the right to use an easement has, has the obligation to maintain it. It's corn book, Pennsylvania common law, Act of William Penn, it is. So, there's, don't, don't give me that. What I'm saying is, this is what I'm saying here. Now, if you can't bind them, and he's gonna, and these people, stop. You've now created a problem for them he didn't have before you put this in, and I don't care how white it is, and how beautiful and how paved it is. He has to go and try to enforce it against, against these guys.
I understand what you're saying, but that's the what if, what if one person buys the house back by him in five years or ten years, that doesn't get along with you guys? It's the same, same type of issue.
Well, not only that, if, if, if these are snowbirds and nobody, and they don't plow it, he's back to where he is today. He's gotta plow it all the way out.
To their benefit? He's not part of their development.
Well, he's already doing it.
So, it's for him. Now, you're gonna say you're gonna put it in here, he doesn't have to.
It would be a paved road.
And he doesn't have to. That's the, we need to be only halfway. We only do a road halfway, that's the problem.
I see what you're saying, I get it.
Uh, so if it's a township road, then...
Right, yeah, then if it's a township road, that problem...
Well, that's good, then it goes away.
I guess would you, would, would you like, not a paved road, trust the houses, or what you have? And that's what you do, no four lots.
And then it's his responsibility to plow out to the cul-de-sac.
It's just not a driveway going on.
Four houses.
Right, they're, we're, we're losing too many conversations.
Yeah, we got two guys, hang on a second, it's, yeah, you're right, David, it's making it too, it's too hard to get the, those, the minutes, so...
What percent of Albert Road?
Fifty percent, seventy-five percent, ten percent? How far back, when I look at Albert Road, how far back is being improved? Half of it, percent of it? About half?
I would say maybe half.
About half, okay.
Their cul-de-sac would have to pretty much encompass back to the second driveway. So, it's about half.
Well, the cul-de-sac's gonna have to be on, it would be on the last, it would circle on the last lot.
Yeah, it would have to be on the last lot because of your garage or cul-de-sac.
And is that possible to do?
Yes. Yeah, there's lots from on that lot.
I think the dedication would be...
And that's, that's item sixty-four, which...
Yeah, that was one of the things we wanted to talk about, too.
Right.
What do you guys think about that?
What we got?
Inheriting a new road.
Yeah, it is about half.
Do you plow on it?
I can't permit it today, but I, I think, yeah, as long as it's safe, sure, it'll be.
Supervisors. You guys recommend, we would wanna go to supervisors and get.
Yeah.
And returning to. Back to. We would, that would be great to sit down with them, but paving that, we're doing a whole stormwater thing, for that whole impervious area, it's not just the pavement of, of the road, it would be nice to go back and pave it, but, you know, it's, it's a lot more than just even what they have, it'll be a lot of the township. Is that why?
That's pretty much by the car.
About right.
First part is up.
Right, so what do we have? So what do we have to do tonight?
Well, I think they're looking for direction on the road, there's been discussion, but I don't know if they've been given the direction, and I don't know if you have any other issues in the letter, they, a, a lot of them are technical comments, but I know that.
Yeah, the technical comments.
Everything is weather on the road, I think the only other thing was lighting and sidewalks, but if, if we can't get an answer on the road, the ordinance actually says you have to have sidewalks in both.
Oh, I, I, I think what you could get a hypothetical answer is, if we come to agreement on the road, would we want sidewalks, and then we want lighting? I don't know.
That's how I look at it.
So sidewalks and lighting would be what, in the, in the land development, in the Saldo part?
Yeah, it's wavable.
So those are wavables, right, if, remember, that's not zoning, that's wavable.
That's correct, and if you wanna keep the rural nature normally, there are not sidewalks.
Yeah, right.
Well, the only sidewalk in the whole five-mile area.
You guys should, you guys should come to Justin Hall Township and have the conversation.
They have sidewalks there?
To nowhere.
To answer your question.
Well, they did.
Chair, the time on this expires on March nine, so we need to do something with it, either they gotta give us an extension.
Oh, we should move this along.
You have to make a recommendation to the board, so the board acts on it for March nine, and I think the recommendation would be to the die, and that's not meant to be due, but I mean, it, don't have full compliance with the ordinance yet, and the supervisors would then take that recommendation to, or follow, hopefully follow that recommendation to die. Or the applicant can say, no, we'll give you an extension for ninety days.
Yeah, we, we would have to give an extension.
Again, that's not your best.
We're here for direction of the, the road, it's the conversation.
Have, have you responded in writing to the comments yet?
Oh, okay.
If really, we would need that, to, to what direction?
Yeah, there really is halfway there.
Well, we, we were here for this.
Sure, yeah.
And, and like John, I don't know if there's any, any direction right now on, I, the dedication, we're still juggling the balls, okay?
This is my parents.
As you properly aptly note, this is board, or commission, is a recommending commission, so whatever they recommend, the supervisors could possibly change it or do something different, so.
Right.
Uh, actually, it comes down to.
Prepare a written extension court for your son, so, uh, let's do that while they're still talking about this.
Were there any other items on the list? Sidewalks, lighting, road.
Stormwater thing that talked to you or is all about.
That sounds really technical, uh, engineering revision, yeah.
The road cul-de-sac, the dedication or not, and sidewalks.
Well, I personally am leaning towards them building this to township standards, putting a turning route roundabout somewhere down at the end, and dedicating it to the township, that solves our problems.
I agree.
I agree.
Agreed. What was that, I'm sorry, I was doing something. Well, I didn't make a motion, I just gave my opinion.
That's all right, Ron, sure.
And then, um, at any point, should we, again, I'm just throwing out ideas, should we request that the other four landowners agree with what we're doing, in terms of that becoming a township road to this end, if that's the direction we got?
Well, let me, let me try this, are you gonna, were you, were you going to maybe contact the other landowners about this, do they know?
Yes.
Are you gonna ask, are you, are you gonna ask for the extension?
Yes, I have, I, it's, uh, May nineteenth.
Okay, let's do.
Sign that.
Just to the nineteenth?
Day nineteen. Oh, may, may, yeah, right, right, right. We were glad, like I said, we were glad, uh, to show the plan and, and talk about it, so.
Well, I think at the very, at the, I think at the very least for the next hearing, I think they should, I think the other homeowners should be noticed of the next hearing, where this is gonna be taken up, and if you guys get with them on it down the road and see how, you know, you'll have your, you'll, you know, whatever it may be, and see if they're making it on the same page.
Correct.
The reason I'm bringing that up is a discussion is what Bob has brought up about Lake Valhalla, if they all know what we're doing and they all agree to it.
Yes.
Then it prevents any kind of a potential lawsuit, trying to do the best for everybody as opposed to.
Yeah.
Because I, I agree that having this as a separate HOA is gonna be a disaster, 'cause people are gonna come in here and buy a house and go, yay, I got my house, and then two months later, when they gotta pay to plow the driveway, they're gonna freak out, and they're not gonna like it.
The town is willing to, uh, that, that take over the road, I think, I think that's the best situation.
Then I think we should, then I'll make, we do have the, I'll make the motion then that we table this till, we'll table till the March meeting, uh, March, what'd you say, tenth, Ron?
We'll do the same days, the, the twenty-eight days.
Tenth, March. I, I'd make the motion that we table it to March tenth, I'll give you guys the time, you know, to, to have your, your discussions and, and the various revisions, now that you've hurt me out anyway.
That if you're gonna ask for a Saldo waiver on the lighting and/or sidewalks, put that in right.
Yeah, put it in right, it's easier for us, and I think that would frankly be something that would be quite well received, at least by me.
Would, would you guys, why did you want to the supervisors about the dedication, I'd hate to go down this whole road of getting a plan together, talking about dedication.
Well, it's a public meeting, you can talk, you can put it on, at, at, well, they can't declare a meeting tonight, but. But you can certainly put it on, so that you, you know, if you ask to put it on an agenda or whatever, that, however, you know, Jake is, Jake is good.
If you could, like, you know, brief up a two-page, uh, narrative, let's say, of how you would propose to do the turnaround, you know, uh, and, and that you would be dis, uh, discussing and trying to fashion an agreement, uh, with the folks further back, down the lane, as the maintenance and the rest of it, and then propose the dedication perhaps.
Which would be the maintenance.
Oh, yeah, which would be the maintenance, so you would propose a dedication.
Yes.
And any, any, and I caution this especially, any stormwater, stormwater issues at that turnaround, 'cause you're gonna be controlling stormwater down along the, along the new improved lane. So what happens to it when it gets to the end?
Sure.
And, and I think you should address that.
He, he already has, yeah, well, yeah, we're.
Yeah, yeah, John, kind of.
Right, well, yeah, I, so, but just summarize.
So I've made the motion to table it till.
Second.
Our March meeting, David's, David's seconded it.
Yeah.
Any additional discussion, gentlemen?
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good, maybe we'll see, if, if you don't need to come in next month, if you're still working stuff out, then just send an email, uh, and we'll get it, and we'll say, no, please put it on April, and we'll just do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Your name is?
Uh, John.
Sure, that's H U P.
That's H U P?
H U P.
That's H U P's, okay.
And Mr. Vettel?
Yes, right.
It can keep, keep, E L.
Hmm?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll, we'll move on to, uh, six C here on the economic development.
Anything funny, Chris?
I have a quick question, please. When would be a good time to address the water issue with this?
Excuse me, when you say water issue, are, are you talking about groundwater, well water?
Groundwater, I've been.
You're talking about surface water, like drainage?
No, it rains.
It rains?
It comes.
It sheets off the road or whatever?
And it comes, a lot of it comes off of this, this acres.
Yeah.
Into eight little bits that we have.
Yeah, you mean this unimproved six acres at this point, right?
Correct, and it's, I've been taking video for a year now.
Yeah.
Okay, I have that, I can share with, I, I don't know if I already have a copy of that.
Why don't you let John answer that question? Yeah, we, we have quite a few stormwater comments, uh, in our letter, that they have not addressed yet, that's supposed to address the stormwater coming off of the zone, and actually, they're supposed to reduce, if they go through with this plan and reflect it, that's supposed to reduce the rate of runoff to less than what it is today, through.
Excellent.
Combination of detention basins and, uh, stormwater management controls.
Where that, over there in that area, Franklin Hill, we've had a lot of, the beaver, and up that, across.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I heard about that, I didn't see it, but I heard about it.
In my twenty-one years I lived there, no, no water issue, I have.
Yeah, and now you got beaver.
And I don't wanna.
I don't mean to laugh. No, beavers are a pain in the, yeah, yeah. They are, they are a pet. Yeah, yeah.
Uh.
Thanks.
But the point, the point being, the township has strict stormwater management control, and if this plan is approved, they are going to have to comply with those standards.
Thanks for your thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, yeah? No, it comes right over, it'll take the pavement right up, buckle it right up.
What about the dam and, and the lodges, yeah?
Oh, they have such, oh, there, okay.
And they come back the next week.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so next, six C, the economic development one, this is the one Julia had milled around with red line and, and commas and so forth.
Yeah.
All right.
Robert, what are the red lines for? I mean, I, I understand how that works. So.
Oh, 'cause yours are gray, okay, yeah, go ahead, Jake, yeah, please.
Would you please?
Okay. You're the point person, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
The red lines were primarily to delineate the differences between the ordinance that you reviewed with her, and we're mostly okay with in October.
Right.
Uh, and for the technical pages, there are several deletions based on some recommendations from Ross, the most significant change is based upon, um, we have discussed different strategies and variations in terms of mixed use within mixed-use buildings and whatnot, and what we decided to do instead of a flat percentage, which proves cumbersome to enforce, we require, in this, in this grant, effectively, um, if, if someone were to have like no street frontage or something like that, uh, for like a building in a bash, they can concentrate their commercial uses at the front building, as long as the people, what they would have to do, which is, your first floor, no matter what, has to be commercial, unless there is nothing incidental like the, um, wash and dryer that.
Yeah, okay.
Back, and then the doors, uh, inline with firecoats, otherwise, you're not gonna be able to have any residential with three frontage at all.
Yeah.
It has to be, uh, unlike.
That's to avoid the, the, the tiny footprint, little, little commercial thing, yeah, right, okay.
Correct. And, and also, we, we, we also catch the neighbor requirements for the major mixed-use developments, that'll, 'cause those are different, so I should say this, we changed it from mixed-use developments to major mixed-use buildings, because there are only a couple types of projects that could be a major mixed-use development, those are the ones that have the tract of fifty acres, because the ones that have tracts of fifty acres are able to do, under the existing ordinance, different types of residential uses, that are not like the typical multifamily like we talked about, if someone were to have a hundred acres in the E D zone that fit, the, between streets they rode and whatnot, they could definitely build a budget special, a two-hundred single-family dwelling, because that's permitted in two thirty seven.
I think what we're trying to address, something about, that, that, I'm committed, uh, submitted, uh, master plan of house.
Mm-hmm.
Major development, sure, it should be a major mixed-use development, that's what I think is in the ordinance, you know, and that's what you were talking about, except for some, it's just not a building. Or it's out there.
Yeah.
And it includes it probably overwhelming the rest of the zone.
Yeah.
So we include the mixed-use buildings, because of course, that's gonna happen, but there's not gonna be ten developments with a hundred apartments, you know, based on the fees received, because you have to have, you know, a fair but cumbersome first floor that is commercial or another byright use for the ordinance, and there's a lot of those, so there's a lot of ways to comply with it, but effectively make sure that, under the current ordinance, because you can't go above four floors, it prevents someone from overwhelming what we anticipate in the zone, and it allows for more flexibility to, where someone can do, you know, medical offices on the bottom floor, um, or, I, I should say, like a restaurant on the bottom floor, medical offices above, and then a couple of apartments, like it gives more flexibility on that, to preserve the commercial nature, without allowing for many villages.
Well, okay. Bring the villages on, is what I.
Yeah, I'm actually, I don't mind.
I'd rather see, for example, nodes of commercial activity interrupted by green space, uh, and the commercial activity could be mixed-use.
Sure, oh, no, no, I don't disagree, I mean, I, I'm saying, this means there's not gonna be a Smithfield gateway on every fifty acres with a hundred single families.
Well, I was gonna. Right, well, I was gonna, I was gonna ask you, in the unlikely event that Smithfield gateway is wildly successful, that's a big, let, and, and let's say that something catches on, and then somebody, uh, maybe Mr. De Petrus or somebody like him decides, wow, I'm gonna do something with Marshall's Creek, which we would welcome, I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time, I'll admit it, and mountain matter, oh my God, uh, and there we go, you know, now we start to contemplate, and what, you know, I guess, use Scott's terminology, what would, what does this law contemplate? What are we really trying to do, and I think we need, we're, I think we're getting, it's getting a little loose here, maybe you guys talk about it more, but around here, we're, we're, we're lost in the weeds.
I, I think you're getting to the bigger question that I brought up some time ago, which is, to what extent this complies with a comprehensive plan, and do we have a comprehensive plan, and there's a statement here that I would say, it's a lot of discussion if we're gonna leave it in, it says that, uh, on section ten.
Mm-hmm.
It says the district promotes flexible design options to encourage, this is the first column, page, page, section ten, section ten.
Yeah.
But basically, it says all of this is in accordance with the goals of the Smithfield Township Comprehensive Plan, okay, I don't think that's an accurate statement, I mean, the con, only comprehensive plan we have, this is two thousand one, it's well outdated, we talked about not wanting to update it, we talked about having some more in-depth discussions this year, 'cause we were talking about it last year, um, but that's the big question that I think you're asking, Doug, what is, what is, I mean, there's a, in my mind, it's a big discussion of what this economic development area is, even to the point where David brought up a few meetings back, that he thought it was only going to be one little part, uh, over there with the old I G A's.
Right, that's, that's how we started.
And all of us are talking about it.
And all of a sudden, you know, it's this whole area where we have major roads, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
If this ordinance was passed, and what, what were, you know, and unanimously, if that, what this is contemplating now, it's not necessarily an overhaul of what was passed, it's more so closing loopholes and adding some clarifications, so here the contemplation is effectively making sure that somebody, if, if you followed the existing ordinance to a case, someone could literally build eighty-eight percent, uh, uh, residential and small percent. uh, uh, residential and twelve percent commercial, based upon little loophole that you can do with height limits and the lack of the specific percentage or variability rate for your residential commercial ratio. So that's, that's the main thing that's here, and then the only other thing, they're added of prevention of planning for invasive species, which
Yeah.
has, we've had, we, I don't think anyone came here and planned it not we, but, um.
No, does that include beaver?
Uh, but basically, it's that, it's adding the farmer's market like we talked about before.
Yeah.
And some other things, the wireless cell facility that, uh, that we have to have based on our other ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for the five G.
What, five G, Robert?
Yeah, I have it at E S U, it's
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you have an iPhone twelve or up, you can access, uh, five G, I don't know
How old am I, huh?
addability with. I think you have it on a two, iPhone thirteen.
Yeah.
Pro Max, right?
I think I'm all the way up there, yeah.
The large one, yeah, yeah, if you're in town.
No, I have an eleven Pro Max, pardon me.
Really?
That'd be why, 'cause this is about two years old, yeah, alright.
Oh, it looks just like a new, oh, in any case, if you have an iPhone twelve or up, you can access five G, in, uh, at least in areas that, I know there's other areas that they're thinking about it, but they have a pre-application meeting, but someone wants to put it in the parking lot, and, and that, you know, rightfully so, you can't reduce parking to, you know, five G, and it exists in use.
Oh.
There, I'm working through this, but i- in any case, it permits, uh, the small wireless, uh, facilities, wireless communication facilities that are five G, and then it clarifies, uh, that residential ratio and also adds the clarification that, uh, mixed use developments are major mixed use developments, because they have stricter requirements compared to the incentive bias.
So, so this is taking stitches into the loose, baggy parts of the original.
Right, yeah.
Continuing, this is like the third or fourth pass through this, right?
Basically, yeah, I mean, so this is profound, I mean, it's start, the revision started at fourteen pages, and now I think we are at
Eighteen, half a dozen.
Twelve, with the signature, right, so, it- it's mostly that, it's not necessarily a lot of repealing and restating like we started with, we decided to make this cleaner, so it goes directly toward that, and, uh, the only other difference that you would not have seen before is that we changed the difference, uh, the, the distance of pylon signs in a major mixed use development from, uh, three hundred to two hundred twenty-five feet.
Let's just step outside of, out of the weeds a moment, okay? And, and just ask ourselves, here, my question before, what does this ordinance, what is this, this new E D ordinance contemplate? What is the nature of, of the, of the thing that we wish to see happen? Now, you know, I can answer part of that, because I was, I've been here since the beginning of this thing, and, and part of it is, what are we gonna do with Marshall's Creek, this falling apart and looks like hell and will remain like that unless somebody comes in and figures out what to do about it? And the thing we contemplated initially was public-private partnerships. I don't know why we can't gin something like that up. We had some of the pri- private money here, uh, a cou- in a couple of meetings. Or are they? Why don't we host more meetings like that? Why don't we bring bankers?
He laughed and saw it was a big tree in there, and then he didn't fix the roof. Other part is, manor, where, uh, these costs used to enter into anything that's meaningful that anybody appreciated. Township, which we have, um, our east falls park, right, for three years by one acre, we could use parking lot. Never got an answer, or we got things like, well, we'll sell you a hundred and seventy-five acres for a, for a fifty, or sixty dollars, whatever happened to me? And even if it was outrageous, you know, we got back and we said, let's talk about it, we never heard it.
Yeah.
So, uh, and that's probably the biggest choices parcel that we have, don't you?
Yeah.
It could be, let's say, the Tom committed version of a village.
Yes.
Houses.
Sports, fun, flat, walking trail, yeah, blah, blah, blah.
The Marshall's Creek shopping area. It's fairly small by comparison, but it could feed into that.
Well, if you, especially if you coupled it to Jay Park and the quarry, and the other quarry on the corner.
So then let's ask this then, so the changes that we're making, what would, would these, would these changes help make it more attractive for somebody to come in and do something like redevelopment in Jay Park, or?
Well, I really think so, i- if it incentivizes, uh, infill development that we're talking about.
Yes, we're talking about, right, yeah, yeah.
You know, I mean, that's, that's the most important part of it, because right now the reality is that the commercial market is certainly big, but, you know, they make their money on, on rent, so this incentivizes that to a
Mutual residential.
I would say both, um, I'm not so definite, every new development of any type should be a mixed use development, but I think in some cases, we don't contemplate the mixed use development that is to commercial uses, you know, something that's not like a strip mall at a Wendy's, but, you know, where someone can have gainful, long-term employment and something that's more recreational, like a sports, um, type of thing, but I think this incentivizes marketability of the property that's owned by the people that refuse to do anything, and, you know, the attractiveness from the, the grant perspective and like county's redevelopment authority, uh, they presented to us, uh, last night, more incentives to take some of these lighted properties off the road. Um, I would say from a zoning perspective, the most important feature is allowing for the combination of uses and the, the different design standards, I think are really important. It's sort of haphazard before, I guess from how two oh nine did it look? Sort of keeps it in line with the policies of the area, if you drive down to, to Bucks and Chester County, hopefully how a Wendy's or a McDonald's or, you know, even a Dunkin' Donuts look, I mean, you should see the
Some fire ports.
Fire company or, um,
Yeah.
Uh, outside of, um,
Like the river's on the other side of the river.
But in any case, if there was one outside of, near Polis, I don't remember the exact, by Willow Bridge, they're fire companies, it matches, uh, the area, we're kind of going that type of, but we're also
And you think this, and Robert, you guys think this will, it'll help get us there?
Okay, but I, I have, this has, really, I, just drives me crazy, every time, bring it up every time, and I'm always told, I'm always smackdown, I'm told it's, it, you can't do it. I wanna see elevation. If I'm gonna see, or another foot and floor plan of a building, where, you know, here's the plot plan for this, and here's the footprint of the building, doesn't show me anything. I wanna see, from a developer, I- I don't mean De Petrus fanciful artwork, I'm talking about an actual elevation, I think I've seen one, there was
It's not required by the ordinance, it's the
It's not required by the state, I don't think, is that what you told me?
It's not required by the ordinance to provide it.
Yeah.
Well, let's put it in the ordinance.
Well, we'd have to get an architectural review board and have
There's an idea.
Well, that's a bigger piece to fry, so that, that's a whole nother ballgame, and then we have to have architectural review, we have to have very specific requirements for what we want the township to be.
Well, just let's, if we have any
If we see it and we don't like it, can we tell them, no, we don't like it?
Yeah, we can.
They have an opinion. I know, but that doesn't, they can say, oh, sorry, I don't like it, we like metal siding colored pink.
Well, that's, one of the things that we're, one of the things that the, that the ordinance does say, if I'm not mistaken, that the new E D ordinance says, is broken up facade, different materials, roofline.
We went through that, we went through that with Jay.
Right, right, so we do understand that part, that there, and this is what I believe Scott said, you can do that, but, so, so given that, given that there are those requirements, why not let's see, make it a requirement of that the engineer, the architect, whatever, show us elevations of that footprint.
Finished product.
Let's see what it's gonna look like from the street, you know?
Well, if that's in the ordinance to have the breakup, then, then we could ask for that.
Yeah, yeah, because the ordinance already kind of lays out the ground rules for what it, the building should look like.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because I, I'm
I didn't, I didn't wanna see eighty, eighty feet of a one-level strip mall anymore, I'm tired of it.
If you, a gentleman wanted to add that as proviso in recommending this, we can insert it in when we
It's another red sign to put in the new ordinance.
I don't think an architectural review, only because it's
That's tough enough, it is, that's unwieldy, it is.
Being in a crowd, leaving, they have a looking
Oracle building from
Oh, no, shit, you have to tell them, no, really.
Yeah, 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 right, right.
Right, that, that, no, I agree, I agree.
This is, by the way, forgetting the fact that elevation, it'd be
Right, yeah.
Well, this is the one we did in Maryland, yeah.
Oh, good. In any case, I guess the, the
My blood pressure.
From our perspective, this just tightens up what we have now, so it won't really be in flux like it is right now, like someone could definitely come in, do some things that we definitely don't want.
Yeah, that's right, that's really it.
It tightens that up, I mean, this is more so that, like, like
I agree.
I call it the E D ordinance, I would like to contemplate some of these other things, you know, perhaps it's just as small, but, you know, more old on, on some of those points, I think
Yeah.
The biggest thing is this just makes clearer what you can actually do to our residential.
I agree, I agree, 'cause it was
We're questioning a lot of vendors that's probably developed.
How about, you mentioned a county
I'm sorry, Dave. Sorry. When this is all done and we've passed it and you guys have signed it, does it go into the book, just like this, or do you go back to the original one and make updates?
No, it'll be codified, so it will reflect the changes made in here, so it'll all be in one piece.
Okay, so that they don't have to read the one that's wrong and then come to here and read the one that's right?
Yeah, it'll get integrated in with the website stuff.
Yeah, thank you, basically, make it easy for the engineer, 'cause
Oh, please, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's one of the goals too, 'cause if you give them three takes to get a ordinance, it's
No.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's, it'll be codified.
Yeah, you're asking from the states inadvertently even, you know, on top of others.
No, what I mean, when I, when you say codified, what I mean is, don't have this as a standalone, and
No, no, it's not.
Go into the original and make the change.
Right, yeah, so as it exists now, everything that, so the, the way that the co-publishing company will do is they will take the old plans now, and then they will make the specific replacement to the original, they do it online.
Okay, good, thank you.
And then even in book form.
Then we're just saying updated with the date.
Right, and, and
Just like that, because Jacob's
Yes.
Pressing certain points, getting over it, but I think what we've learned in the two years since we passed the original, uh, E D amendment is actually, this is an organic thing, it's gonna change and grow, where we should be opening up different parts of it and saying, what about this one, what about this one?
Yeah, it could do that.
Yeah, well, not only that, you, it's like with today, you know, you never anticipated something like that, and if that's what we're trying to, as things come in front of us, we wanna make sure we update it.
Right, and I think, you know, if we get this settled, I mean, because if you do end up recommending that we pass this, then, you know, we'll have a cleaner version than, than even this, this is red line, not from the version that we last talked in the public with the last, the version that you last saw, so we had it even cleaner. Um, then we'll be able to get that, you know, done before the building season starts in earnest, and it will also prevent some of those things. But, you know, the, the nice thing about it too, is that if that's a, a baseline, we can assess, you know, where that goes, because right now, the only project that has really baked anything off of the E D zone ordinance is the Smithfield Gateway. There's a couple that have come in, that did some sketch plans.
Yeah, but nothing's come back around, so it's good, if we're gonna fix it, we need to do it now.
Right, 'cause, 'cause if we're doing it in June, they're gonna be like, alright, we'll see you in five years.
Yeah.
Or not at all.
Or, yeah, right, I know what you mean.
So this is a stopgap cleanup?
Not a stopgap, it's not a stopgap, it is a, it's a, it's a cleanup from what we've learned, that's really it.
Okay, so my, my question is, that is, within the minutes of some of our meetings from last year, is that there's a bigger discussion on economic envision, economic development and the vision for what's gonna happen, kinda to your question, so.
Yes, and that, that discussion is ongoing, and this, this tool, this, this new, new overlay, it's not an overlay, this new zone is a step for, for creating a template from which those ideas can grow.
Oh, oh, a graph from which those ideas will
Mitch, if you've never seen Tom, who it is, paid about forty thousand dollars for it, he's a, he's a planner from Philadelphia, but, take it out, it's worth looking at because it shows you that this is all part of
More than worth looking at.
Evolving master plan.
I prefer
Can I speak? They've been talking about a train coming from New York up to Scranton for probably thirty, forty years, and I ran into Bob Haynes.
Yes.
Yeah. And he's been on that committee for that long, and he said that it's gonna happen now, he says they have the right of way of all the properties to build it, he says that Amtrak has got the money, they've got money to do five spurs or something, and they want to get from New York up to Scranton, or maybe from New Jersey up to Scranton. So if that happens, that's gonna be another big boom, the township's gonna be ripe for development, which would be the time that the Morse's Creek Village and Mountain Manor would be looked at very seriously, so I think it gives us an opportunity now to go back and take a second look at this, and what is our vision for that area, what do we want it to be, what architectural standards, and maybe just to take a second look and make sure we're ready for it.
Beautiful thing.
I don't agree on the train, but I agree.
Well, potentially
Is that one of those trains coming?
You know, they've been, I know it's kind of a joke, 'cause it's been talked about for thirty years, but
Uh, more, since I was a boy, really, in the seventies.
Well, it's really funny.
That your father and I were in school together.
Is that one of those invasive species, that train?
Well, the thing is, is, you know, really, is, you know, the, the, the Thirty Second Guinea is, if it takes longer to dri- if it takes longer on a train than it's gonna drive there, it's not gonna work, you have to switch trains multiple times, it's really not gonna work.
Yeah.
And the nature of commuting has changed, uh, dramatically, you can see it in the, in the traffic in the mornings with broadband and, and the post-coronavirus stuff, so the, the reality is, there is nowhere on the planet that a passenger railroad service makes money without heavy government subsidization, and I can't imagine that we will be the one place on the planet of seven billion that it will actually work on its own, 'cause it probably won't.
Well, that's the same as MCTA.
Well, yeah, and you
That's all, that's all
It doesn't work either.
Yeah, no, it's all funded by Pendo.
If any, you're
Back better, baby.
Train over to New York City.
Yeah.
No. I've taken it many times, that's the train.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Train from Dover takes, the fast train, takes about an hour and twenty minutes.
From Dover?
Wait, you're talking about Dover, New Jersey?
Yeah.
Because, by the way, that's near the station, was
Get the last station out.
That's about, one drive to Dover, it's about forty-five minutes.
That's right.
An hour when you park.
Yep.
But the reason it takes that long, and that's, that's the fast one, that trackage, goes through every little town in New Jersey, even if it doesn't stop, the plus of, of the curves and the, and everything in the the, uh, road crossings or such, that you cannot speed it up, there's no way, so if it was coming here, you have to figure it's probably about two and a half hours to New York City.
Wow. And two weeks ago, when we went to see, when, when we had, finally got to use our tickets to see Hamilton that we bought three years ago, spectacular, well, it was utterly spectacular, but we went in for the Wednesday matinee, I, for the first time in my life of all those trips, not a single wait in or out of the Lincoln Tunnel, we were literally on, on Forty Seventh Street in an hour and twenty minutes, going through the tunnel, and there were, and never have I seen that before.
And I would next time, get a nap on your phone